I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will start by doing a roll call, starting with Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina. I believe she's online. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Yeah.
I think we heard her here. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
And myself, Council President Kritzer, chairing this meeting, and here. There are no special orders of the day. The first item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to items or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council and mayor anytime at mayorkouncil@redmond.gov or council@redmond.gov. The views stated by the members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. As a reminder, RCW 42.17A.555 prohibits any public comment during a council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to City of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. Written comment has been distributed to the council, and no one has signed up to speak remotely. We have set six people signed up to speak tonight. The first on the list is Bob Yoder, followed by Melody Lanthorne, followed by Michael Davison. I'll read the others as they come up. Mr. Yoder, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Bob Yoder, Redmond. I'm going to take a moment just to let my heart calm down. I'm not part of the protesters. I'm here because I was driving through town and, I'll take this music stuff off, and a couple of days ago, and I saw a guy, a man, pulling a grocery cart. It was full of his belongings, and I was packed. I put this on my Facebook site. And there was another guy, a tall black man, that was near Fred Meyer. He was gyrating and talking to himself in schizoid-like fashion. Kind of reminded me of when I went down to Portland on a sightseeing trip to see this historic, live in this historic Monarch Hotel. We almost turned back after we were there. I mean, you talk about tourism. So anyway, I reported this to Tisa. Thank heavens she's here. Her number for person is 425-553-7093. And she is open and wanting to get sightings. If you see somebody, call her. So far, she's gotten 100 into permanent housing, which is amazing. When I called, talked to her, she said, make it sure that everybody knows that the Silver Cloud is not a homeless hotel. It's also not a shelter. And it's only for permanent housing. It's only going to be accepting 10 individuals right now. It's already filled through referrals from Bellevue, Redmond, and Kirkland, I believe, though no one is there now. They're waiting for completion. It will open for permanent housing sometime a year from now, 2025, once the rooms are converted. You had a grand opening. We didn't hear anything about that, and several, lots of people came. But getting beyond those emotions, the Silver Cloud was repurposed in 2022 and made comfortable for Afghan refugees, but it's not good enough for our homeless today. Half of the homeless die from overdose, and here we are, not letting them in because we're not ready to have them there, but yet you could have the Afghans there. So please help Tisa when she goes about around, she starts at 7:30, looking for individuals. I don't know where she puts them. Fortunately, we don't have very many right now, but it won't be long. Her number is 425-553-7093.
Thank you. Next up, we have Melody Lanthorne, followed by Michael Davison, followed by Linda Seltzer.
Hello. I'm Melody Lanthorne, general manager of the Seattle Marriott Redmond, located at 7401 164th Avenue Northeast in Redmond. I have recently sent a letter to the city stating the support that we have for the tourism strategic plan that has been recently developed. I am a board member of the TPA, the Tourism Promotion Area, and a committee member of LTAC, as well as a Redmond hotelier, and wanted to make sure that you all know that we endorse and support all the effort that has gone into the strategic plan. We feel like there's a good success model that will come out of the plan. It's innovative, creative. It's got an approach that I, that we all believe, me and the Marriott Hotel I represent, will lead to a successful future of developing some of our need areas on the weekends when we're not busy, and it will enhance our ability to drive people into Redmond to stay at our hotels. And I wanted to say thank you for your openness to letting us have the survey and the plan done, and we really look forward to the outcome over the years that this plan will bring to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michael Davison.
Three minutes, right? May speak a little fast, but I'm going to try to get as much as I can here and speak clearly. So this meeting is about, you know, the kind of the future, you know, what's 2050, you know, things we aspire, we want to be. But how we get into the future is what we do today, right? What happens tomorrow depends on what we do today, now. So what we do tomorrow, today, is what's going to happen in 2050. Now, there's a, I got three main points I want to get across. What makes Redmond Redmond, first of all, is that it's exclusive. It's not Seattle. It's not Bellevue. People come to Redmond because it's open. Everything's walkable. There's parks, trails, it's breathable. The community is vibrant. There's not much homelessness that's in the area, you know, crime, you know, is relatively unseen for the most part. It's clean. At least it was three years ago when I got here. In the past three years, I've seen dramatics amount of graffiti, trash every day. I'm done picking up trash. It's up to you guys at this point. It is flooded trash. No one cares anymore. It used to be clean. Redmond is trying to become Seattle, Bellevue. I've seen, you know, all these apartment buildings being stacked up, bringing more people in, you know, for tax purposes, of course, you know, because that's, we want our money, but the money's already here. We just don't know how to manage our budget, the money that we already have. You want to attract people, get a watchtower. Many Seattle-inspired Space Needle and Redmond, make it out of wood, cedar, get local artists to carve out the base, get restaurants throughout the area, get it, you know, as far as the permits will let us go, twist some arms, you know, get it, you know, as far as we can overseeing the valley. It's beautiful valley. Everyone wants to come here. But I guarantee you, in five, 10 years after we're done making this place turn into Seattle, Bellevue, all city up, they're going to jump over to Woodinville. Woodinville's going to be the new hotspot, because you know what? It's not Seattle. It's not Bellevue. It's not Redmond, because you got citified. We all want that taxpayer, we want all the generating, all that thing. But no, we already got the money here. We got, we're one of the richest counties, area. There's lots of money here. Oh, yeah, there's lots of money, but if we want to keep Redmond clean, we got to police our laws that are already here. And, you know, that tower, that's going to get all our business, hotels filled in, tourists, everybody is going to want to come here and see our own little version of Seattle here. But we got to maintain, you know, like our laws that are coming here. Every year, we make more and more laws, don't we? But how are we going to enforce them? There's more laws every year than there was the year before. 20 years before, we know it, we can't even move our house. It's against the law. But who's enforcing them? We have all these apartment buildings stacked up, filled with thousands of people. How many police officers have we put in the budget to account for that, to keep that balance? That means more calls. The council already said that once we get these people, we get the taxes, we can afford more police officers, right? It's not happening. You know, we got these, how we can get tens of thousands of dollars are missed in opportunity.
And in conclusion?
Is that cleaning up litter, litter fines. The homelessness, to hold the churches accountable.
Mr. Davison, your time is up.
Only 5% of Redmond go to church. These churches are supposed to be taking in the homeless.
Mr. Davison.
Budgets and nonprofit. Overlake took 200K a year in parking.
I'm sorry, your time is up, Mr. Davison. Thanks so much for coming.
Church is overlake, 200K a year.
Understood. Next up is Linda Seltzer. After that will be David Morton, followed by Al Rosenthal.
Please hold the churches accountable.
Ms. Seltzer, you have three minutes.
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
And in conclusion?
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. David Morton, followed by Al Rosenthal.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor pro tem. I'm David Morton. Several key issues currently face Redmond, which warrant your urgent attention and action. Redmond, with its vibrant community and rapidly growing economy, stands at a crucial juncture where careful planning and proactive policies can significantly shape its future. First, housing affordability continues to be a pressing concern. As the home of major technology companies, Redmond attracts a large workforce, which in turn drives up housing demand and prices. Redmond has prioritized the development of affordable housing projects and implemented policies that encourage diverse housing options. This includes promoting mixed-use developments and incentivizing the construction of both rental and owner-occupied affordable units. Additionally, expanding partnerships with nonprofit housing organizations can provide more support for low-income families and individuals. Secondly, Redmond's infrastructure needs substantial improvements to keep pace with its growth. Traffic congestion and limited public transportation options are significant issues for many residents. Enhancing public transit services, such as increasing the frequency and coverage of bus routes, and expediting the completion of the light rail extension should be high priorities. Investing in pedestrian and cyclist infrastructure will promote sustainable transportation and improve safety. Protected bike lanes and well-maintained sidewalks can encourage more residents to opt for greener modes of travel. Another critical issue is environmental sustainability. Redmond is renowned for its natural beauty and must lead by example in implementing green policies. Expanding green spaces, protecting existing natural habitats, and promoting urban forestry can enhance well-being and resilience against climate change. Adopting stricter regulations on waste management and encouraging the use of renewable energy sources in both residential and commercial sectors are essential steps towards a sustainable future. Lastly, fostering a sense of community through inclusive public spaces and events is vital. The city should continue to support cultural festivals, community markets, and recreational programs that celebrate Redmond's diversity and bring residents together. Enhancing accessibility and ensuring that all public spaces are welcoming to people of all abilities will strengthen community bonds. In conclusion, addressing these issues will ensure that Redmond remains a thriving, inclusive, and sustainable city. Please consider these priorities and work collaboratively with the community to achieve them. And please vote on a motion to hold a public hearing on Initiative 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Last on, on our public comment list is Al Rosenthal. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. I'm curious, are you going to continue enforcing drug laws? If you insist on allowing Plymouth Housing to build in Redmond, as part of their operating agreement, require that illegal drugs not be allowed in the building, and allow the Redmond Police Department access to all apartments without a search warrant to enforce a no-drugs-allowed policy. Now, a lot of the advocates of Plymouth Housing would say, well, regular apartments, they don't do that. No, in a regular apartment, in your lease, if you were doing fentanyl in your room, they would evict you. So that's why you should not allow drugs to be allowed in Plymouth Housing. Plymouth allows the drugs. I re-sent you an email. It was the one, original email where inside of Plymouth Housing, they were doing fentanyl in their rooms, there was human feces on the floor. Well, I sent you a second video that recently Mike, who was the main person in that video inside of Plymouth Housing, who complained that Plymouth doesn't try to get them off drugs. Mike is now dead. He's the fourth OD death in that Plymouth Housing, one Plymouth Housing building, from doing drugs in the building. That's why I urge you, when you do your operating agreement, you should not allow drugs. Apartment buildings, the big apartment building right over here, if they, if somebody rented there and did fentanyl, they wouldn't be allowed to do it. But you're going to allow somebody that operates an apartment building, Plymouth Housing, to allow, they will allow their tenants to do fentanyl. And it's ridiculous that you're going to do that. It should be completely prohibited. I just came from 17 days in Ecuador. There were no drugs of any kind that I could see, no homeless, but they do have a problem with the drug cartels. The reason is, we allow drugs here, we allow the market here. We're destroying Central American countries by our federal government, our state government, and our local governments not enforcing drug laws. We provide a market for their drug cartels to sell the drugs here and cause all kinds of trouble in their own countries. You're not only destroying your town and country by allowing the drugs, you're destroying Central American countries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And before we close, I did want to note, one of the public comments that we received noted our homeless outreach administrator's phone number, Tisa Rutherford, and I believe stated it incorrectly. So for the listening public, if you, if you see anyone experiencing homelessness who might need support, they can reach out to Tisa at 425-556-2413. And with that, public comment is closed. The next item on our item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
The consent agenda has been moved by Council Vice President Forsyth and seconded by Councilmember Anderson. Are there any items to pull? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council Vice President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 Aye. And with that, I will read into the record Resolution Number 1583, a resolution of the City of Redmond, Washington, authorizing the mayor to legally bind the city with respect to the southeast Redmond neighborhood park, for which the city seeks grant funding assistance managed through the Recreation and Conservation Office. The next item on the agenda is a staff report. The first staff report will be MGP 12, Overlake East Master Plan Development Agreement and Phase Number One and Two Site Plan Entitlements quasi-judicial decision. And presenting this is our Planning and Community Development Director, Carol Helen. Director Helen, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm just going to introduce this item and Tim McCarth, who's joining us this evening. So as noted, I'm Carol Helen, the Planning and Community Development Director, and I am, the item before you this evening is the MPG 12, Overlake East Master Plan Development Agreement and Phase One and Two Site Plan Entitlement. Tim McCarth introduced this item on May 7th at the Planning and Public Works Committee of the whole meeting, and Tim's here this evening to provide a staff report on the proposed project and also collect questions that you would like staff to answer at the study session that is scheduled for next week. So with that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Tim for him to run through his presentation.
Good evening, mayor pro tem, council. Tim McCarth, principal planner with the city. As Director Helen indicated, we are here tonight to discuss the Overlake East project. We ran through this at the committee of the whole meeting, as she noted. What we're here to do tonight is to go through a presentation, show you some graphics, give you some orientation to the project, and then from there, determine if you want to hold a study session next week on the 28th, and if so, provide some questions for me to answer for you. So that's what we're here for tonight. One thing I do want to remind the council, as I stated last time at the committee of the whole meeting, this is a quasi-judicial matter, and so you're, if you have any ex parte communication with anyone outside of the council meeting, you will need to disclose that at the public hearing. You'll also need to disclose any potential conflicts of interest that you feel need to be disclosed at the meeting. Okay, with that, let's get into the project. The project is a four-building master plan in three phases. There's, as part of the discussion tonight, what we're presenting is a master plan. Associated with the master plan is a development agreement. And then there are two separate site plan entitlements that are packaged together with this for Phase One and Phase Two. So this is the location, prominent intersection of 152nd Avenue Northeast and Northeast 24th, kind of in the core of Overlake, as shown in the graphic there. This is just to give you some context in terms of the level of activity that is happening in this portion of Overlake and where Overlake East fits in in the overall scheme of things. So Overlake East, on the right-hand slide, is highlighted in red there. It's directly adjacent to the Pixel project that's recently been approved, south of Estera Park and Catty Corner across 152nd and 24th from two projects that are currently in review process, Stream Overlake and Overlake Square. This is the site and phasing plan. As I mentioned, it's a three-phase project with four buildings, summarized on this slide. So they're all eight-story buildings. Buildings A and B are mixed-use buildings with the commercial use focused on 152nd, which is a retail street. Then Building C and D are, well, Building C is going to be a multifamily building. Building D, in the third phase, is going to be either a multifamily building or an office building, and the developer will choose which of those is going to be prior to entitling that through a site plan entitlement process. The overall unit count, if Building D is multifamily, is slightly over 1,100 units. One thing that I did want to note, the site slopes pretty significantly, about 60 to 65 feet from the easterly property line down to 152nd Avenue. So if you've experienced the section of 24th, you can understand the slope there. So the buildings will be stepped down the slope. There's also a significant grade change from the adjacent King County Metro Center there and the Overlake Village Affordable Housing Project that's owned by the King County Housing Authority. There were some questions last time about incentives and how those worked for this project, so I thought I would add a slide. Basically, in Overlake, you've got a system where there is a base level of density and a base height level that's established. Base height is five stories. The base floor area ratio is 2.5, and through a series of incentives, you can achieve additional floor area and additional height. So there's kind of a package approach. You have to choose one of the primary incentives. In this case, the developer has chosen the LEED certification and tree, and support of the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan. That gives them .2 FAR and an additional story. They're doing more residential units than the minimum required based on the zoning code that gives them an additional one story. And then because they are using a combination of structured and wrapped structured parking, that gives them a bonus of 1.5 FAR and one story. So adding those things together, at the bottom of the page there, you can see that the maximum allowable floor area ratio for the project is 4.2 FAR with a maximum height of eight stories. They are using the eight stories. The total FAR is coming in closer to 4.0 as opposed to 4.25. Let's get into some images there, because they look better than I sound. So on the left-hand side, this is built, Phase One, Building A, which is the northwest corner of the site, and the image on the left is from 152nd and Hopper Way. So that is basically looking southeast. Hopper Way there is how you would access the King County Metro Center. And so this is the building corner. You can see, you've got retail on the 152nd, which is the retail street. As you move up Hopper, you've got, working with the grade, a combination of screen-structured parking and residential units. And then this on the right-hand side, that's an internal access drive there on the right-hand side. You can see the slope going up into the property, and this is going to be retail uses along the street front here. Give you a sense of what the streetscape character is going to be in front of building one, so I think this is a good visual to show you how a series of different things are working. Obviously, the building's relationship to that streetscape, a lot of transparency at the ground level to allow for the commercial use, a pretty generous building overhangs, serious amount of landscaping, separating the actual public sidewalk from area that's in front of the building. That will allow some of those uses hopefully to spill out into that area, whether that be seating or other, other things in conjunction with those commercial uses. And then moving out from there, you've got the sidewalk, your landscape strip, and then a cycle track, and then moving out into the street trees. This is Building Two, or excuse me, Building B in Phase Two, so southwest corner of the project. Again, on the left-hand side, that's the internal access drive there on the left, sloping up into the property. That's going to be the lobby location there at that corner. And then moving south along 152nd, you'll get to the corner of 152nd and 24th. Again, that gives you a notion of the steepness of 24th. So that's the amount of grade that they're working with in the project. And again, this will be commercial use on this ground floor. As you move up 24th, because of the nature of that street, we don't believe that retail or other commercial use is probably going to be supported there. So you've got a combination of active multifamily uses that are going on along that streetscape. Again, just a sense for the streetscape character for Building Two. The graphic on the lower right-hand side there gives you a sense for what they're calling a café zone. That's directly adjacent to the commercial uses on the ground floor there with the overhangs. That'll allow uses to spill out, very permeable kind of pedestrian network spilling out, accessing to the sidewalk, and then the cycle track and the street beyond. Final building is Building C. This is a bit different in character from the first two buildings because it is a multifamily building. So one thing I would like to highlight on the slide is the left-hand image. That gives you a sense for the central open space that's being provided as part of the project. That's between Buildings B and C. So this is going to allow a lot of pedestrian permeability into the site through circulation, getting people off the street, better connections to the King County Transit Center in and out, and just a place to relax, sit down, have a coffee. The right-hand image is the other corner of the building, the southeast corner of the building. That's the private access drive that loops through the site. And then Building D would be further to the right of that, which we developed in the future. This is pretty much a signature piece of the project, this three-block open space here. Again, it connects 24th to the interior of the site and ultimately up to the King County Metro Center. So you've got kind of a series of paths here, opportunities for people to sit, opportunities for public art. There will be a water feature there. There's going to be an opportunity for pop-up events. So they're providing electricity and water service to these areas to host small pop-ups or music or something of that nature. So it allows people to get through the site more efficiently as opposed to having to walk all the way around and ties into the rest of the pedestrian network that's being provided as part of the site plan. And speaking of that network, what I've tried to do here in the right-hand image is to identify the kind of, the extent and connections of the pedestrian network through and around the site. So the yellow portions around the site, that's the public sidewalk network. The pink areas or magenta areas are walkways that will be accessible to the public through the site and through the central open space and then along the access drive. So people will have their choice of how to access the site. And then the final pedestrian feature is the urban pathway along the easterly property line in between this project and the Pixel project. There is a development agreement with the project. The first request in terms of flexibility is to do this as a three-phase project with a series of phased improvements. The vast majority of those improvements will be done in Phase One and Two. And then Phase Three is essentially going to ride along on those improvements. A tenure term for the development agreement with a potential five-year extension. It will vest the project to the current land use controls, so it won't be subject to any future code amendments. And they're also requesting flexibility for use of active multifamily uses on the ground floor. What this really means is on 152nd, those are going to be the primary entries to the building. The way the code reads is you have to provide pedestrian-oriented uses on the ground floor on 152nd because it is a retail street. However, recognizing the need to access the building, they're doing smaller areas of lobby space adjacent to those commercial units. So a small amount, but it still needs some flexibility in terms of the code language. What is being provided in terms of public benefits relative to the flexibility that's being requested in the development agreement is pretty substantial. A tremendous amount of open space is being provided, significantly greater than what would be required by code, including that central open space. There's also courtyards within each building that will be private. There's public art opportunities both along the streetscape and within the central open space, urban pathway improvements, provide seating areas, landscape features and so forth for people to take a break while they're walking or using the pathway. There's going to be a public bicycle maintenance facility on 152nd. So if you have a flat or your chain is loose, you can stop there, fix that up, and continue on your way. Enhanced paving and lighting throughout, which is kind of just the urban design features that are being provided. Street furniture along the street frontages, particularly on 152nd, to complement the commercial uses. And then the last two benefits are very interesting, not something that we've seen before. The developer has committed to providing at least 5% of the total units as three-bedroom units, so larger family-sized units, which is something we're obviously looking to support in Overlake to make it more family-oriented, family-friendly, so larger units. 10% of those larger units, the three-bedroom units, will be affordable as well. And then finally, inclusion of some family-focused features, including those interior courtyards that are safe, secure for small children to play, some kid-oriented workspaces where kids can kind of get out of the apartment, get out of their parents' hair for a while, do their homework, play, whatever. And then other types of meeting rooms for either kids or if it's a multi-generational household, for the different generations to get, kind of get out of the apartment, meet their peers and their neighbors and do the things that you do. There's also pet areas on the roof, bike maintenance areas within the building. So some pretty nice features for folks to support families living in the area. Terms of outreach and involvement, this has followed the requirements of the code. We did a notice of application back in September of 2022, and we initially received the application. That was re-noticed in January because of some issues with the initial notice, so we re-noticed. We received comments and response to that. Those are in your package. Those pertain to tree removal, construction noise, construction schedule, and design of the streetscape improvements, including the sidewalk, cycle track, and bike lane. And so this has been a very active area in terms of construction. So I think a lot of the residents have experienced construction fatigue, which is the nature of some of those comments. Tree removal, as indicated, they're using the green building and tree canopy incentive. And so they're actually providing additional trees beyond what is required by the base level of the code to support the tree canopy plan. So I think those comments have been addressed within the context of the application. We held a neighborhood meeting back in November of 2023. It was fairly well-attended. Most of the attendees were existing tenants, so the owners of those retail businesses. It was good conversation. A lot of information was passed back and forth about schedule, about expectations regarding communication. And so, again, that information was passed out to the folks attending. And I think that that is it. We will also do a notice of public hearing 21 days prior to the public hearing for this project. So that will be the final form of public notice. There were some questions at May 7th. I put together a quick issues matrix in response to those. Those are in your packet. Just going through those, there were concerns or questions about business displacement. In response, the developer provided me with an email summarizing what they've done in terms of assisting either former tenants or current tenants with relocation. So that information is available to you. I can also answer any questions that you have, obviously. In terms of the OV Affordable Commercial Incentive, as explained in the issues matrix, developers tend to pick what they know, the lowest-hanging fruit, if you will, from the range of incentives that they can choose. This particular developer did not choose that incentive, instead using the incentives that we summarized earlier in the presentation. Maps and graphics, there's lots of pages in your packet, as I'm sure you noticed. There's lots of graphics in there. If you're looking for something specific to be explained graphically, please let me know, and I can provide additional information there. We talked about the Overlake incentives. In terms of the use of the new Overlake incentives, this project's been working through the process since 2019. And so I think they're keen to take advantage of what they know and the existing code and the project that they have designed to the existing code. And so having to redesign the project to take advantage of those incentives is not something that they're interested in doing at this time. As I mentioned, there's about 1,100 units potentially within this project. And that obviously is going to be hugely supportive of light rail ridership. It's about a 10-minute walk, about less than a half a mile walk to the light rail station up 152nd from here. And so, as well as directly adjacent to the King County Metro Center. So I think this is very supportive of transit usage. And then there was a question about the meaning of the term encourage in a specific comprehensive plan. And the way the comprehensive plan works is that's obviously setting out kind of broad-based policy language, which is then implemented in the code language in terms of encourage green building in policy NE12. What that means is that has been codified in the Overlake incentive package, which is one of the incentives that the developer's taking advantage of for this particular project. So this will be a LEED Platinum building, again, with additional support to the Tree Canopy Strategic Plan. Study session for the 28th, if you'd like. And if you would like, then please let me know what questions I can answer for you at that meeting or work with the developer to get answered for you. And then assuming we work through that on the 28th, we'll schedule the public hearing for June 18th. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. So councilmembers, I will put it to you to ask questions, as well as if you can share during your comments whether you're interested in a study session. We'll start with Council Vice President Forsyth.
Guess my mic was on before. Thank you. So only question that I have left is, we talked about the impact on public transit and light rail, but we didn't talk about the impact, the construction process. And seeing that this is three phases, it could have a very long construction window and impact on access to light rail and the metro station. So how is the developer and how are we as a city working to ensure that access to sidewalk during construction is not going to be an impediment for folks to use public transit?
Good question. I can get that answered for you.
That'd be great. And you can share that answer via email. I'm not needing a study session at this point.
Okay. So one of the things that we're working with the developer on is obviously the first two phases are packaged together with this. It's really impossible to, you could theoretically do Phases One and Two without doing Phase Three, but we are already working on getting Phase Three of the project entitled. And so I think the advantage to that is given the amount of excavation because of the slope on the site, that that's going to expedite the construction process quite significantly and reduce the impacts. But I can get you additional information, particularly as to how transit access can be preserved.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Fields?
Thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate it. On this third-phase option, whether it's going to be residential or office space, are we to assume, or first part of that question is that that option, if we approve this, then that option is there? It's their option, correct?
That's correct.
They don't need to come back?
That's right. So they would just need a site plan entitlement, which is an administrative review and approval, so would not need to come back to council.
And then are we to draw the assumption then that the either option has the same impact on the area? Additional residential units would not be a greater impact than office space or?
No, so both options have been analyzed, for example, on the traffic studies. So they look at both of those options for Phase Three. Obviously, with an office scenario, you'd have a pretty significant peak hour trip generation in the morning and in the evening, so those have been analyzed. Same height building, essentially same scale building. The difference would be that, you know, you'd have kind of more residential open space associated with that to support the residential uses. You wouldn't have that with office, but that's really the only significant difference in terms of impacts.
Okay, appreciate that. And then really, the decision would be made more from a marketing perspective. What can they best build to meet the market demand at that time? Either more residence or office space? And that would be a decision they would make, a business decision they would make, correct?
That's correct, yeah. I think in fairness, you know, as I indicated, this project has been in the works for a long time. And I think when it was originally designed in terms of that option, it was a very different economic reality for office development. So they've submitted a pre-application at this point for Phase Three, and it is a multifamily building.
Understand. I also don't need a study session, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Salahuddin?
No comment, other than I really appreciate the presentation. And it is good to hear that the pre-application is phasing towards the multifamily housing. And I think the information that you shared is incredibly valuable, just knowing the phases that we're going to be forecasting and the timeline on that. The, actually, a question did pop into my mind is the economic forecast with regard to what Councilmember Fields pointed out, knowing that, you know, the residential peak hours versus business peak hours, if it does end up going to a office building, would there be, was there an economic forecast done with regard to, you know, lunch hour versus, you know, amenities or services in the evening?
No, that's a good question. But the scope of what we require for an application like this typically doesn't include any kind of economic cost-benefit analysis. But yes, that would theoretically support more restaurants or commercial uses during midday. But I think, you know, for more of a 24/7 type of economic support, I think residential is probably going to be more beneficial in that regard.
Yep, really appreciate that. I also don't need a study session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. Really appreciate you coming back and sharing a bit more about this project. And thank you as well for the issues matrix and the response from the developer on their efforts to help the businesses avoid displacement of the current businesses. I do have a couple of questions. We would be remiss not to ask about the parking ratio for this development. Do we have a sense of the parking ratio?
Yes, the parking ratio is below what the code requires because what the code requires is a pretty antiquated ratio. Off the top of my head, I believe the parking ratio is about .6 stalls per residential unit. I'd have to double-check, but it's in that neighborhood. And that's obviously taken into account. So when we get a parking study like we have for this, to use an alternative parking ratio, we get from a transportation engineer kind of an analysis of transit usage and an analysis of the pedestrian orientation of the surrounding streets and kind of the walk-friendliness of the environment, the level of transit, obviously, and accessibility of transit. So those are the factor that go into a recommendation from the transportation engineer for that parking ratio, and that's what was done here.
Thank you. And I think that that answer is more in line with the policy direction of the city today, and so that's much appreciated.
Yep.
I wanted to ask about, I just have two short questions, if the chair will allow. The images, the renderings of what this project will be, for one, it represents, in my mind, a really, a great use in terms of using our housing capacity available on this piece of property. And that is something to be really excited about. I also see something that fits really well with the rest of the 152nd Main Street project as it's going, as it's represented in the renderings currently. But I wanted to ask, we just had a bunch of work completed on 152nd, including the bike path, including the wider sidewalks all the way down to 24th. All of that will be preserved, correct?
That is correct, yep.
Okay.
So anything that is damaged as the course of construction will have to be replaced. And so it's kind of the existing condition baseline. They will actually be installing a lot of the kind of more pedestrian-oriented amenities that are associated with that streetscape improvement project.
Wonderful. Okay, I think that those are all of my questions. I don't think that I need an additional study session for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Mr. McCarth, thank you so much for the presentation. So many of my questions were answered, and many of my colleagues have also asked the questions that I wanted to ask. So thank you, team. questions that I wanted to ask, so thank you, team. The clarification that I wanted to make for those who have been following along with this online and watching the presentation, going back to the renderings, the renderings did show a typical five-over-one building, five floors over the first floor retail, that we've become accustomed to seeing here in Redmond as we've been developing. But just for clarification for those following along at home, that it's actually for an eight-story mixed building. Just confirming that that is still true, yes?
That's correct. Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the council? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, not a question, but maybe a suggestion. I really appreciate the bike track, and I was thinking that I've been advocating as often as I can about bike lockers or places to store bikes. And I would not, would not ask the developer to put bike lockers for people on their property because that wouldn't be fair, obviously. People coming from other neighborhoods to park on your property. But what I would suggest is that you advocate to sound transit, to the people who are going to be building that transit station, that they put bike lockers so that you, that people who live in this new development don't find bikes locked all over their neighborhood.
Understood.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. And just to follow up on that point, I'm also working on the Redmond Town Center project, and they're actually proposing to provide some potentially publicly accessible interior storage space for bicycles that you'd rent probably by the hour or something like that. So people are thinking of that. Granted, not in this particular project, but I think multimodal transportation, someone's going to want to do the same thing in another building that's probably closer to the transit station, so people can take advantage of that, generate some revenue.
Thank you. Not seeing other questions, I will ask a question of my own, which is, so there's, interested to see a lot of the different public benefits that are proposed for this project. Can you remind us what of the public benefits that are laid out within here are guaranteed versus a vision of a general thing they plan to do? So for example, like the water play feature, you know, do we expect that if we approved this, there will be a splash pad? Or the idea of public art in a walkway? You know, can you just clarify that a little bit?
Yeah. So those are required improvements. You know, what you'll see in the site plan entitlement packages that you have are more generalized conceptual locations for those types of features. They will be required. So as we go through the process, for example, the next stage of the review process subsequent to a site plan entitlement is what we call coordinated civil review. That's basically detailed engineering review. I will review those plans to make sure that it's consistent with the planning approval, but also that's the point where the developer will identify the specific locations for the water feature, what that's going to look like. They will also identify the specific locations for public art, and we will take that public art to that commission for review and input before they're selected. And so it just kind of gets bundled into the review process. Everything that you saw on that list will be incorporated into the project. And if they're not, then we will have a conversation about why it can't be provided and what they need to do to basically provide a commensurate public benefit and justify the reason why they can't provide what they said they would.
Understood. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Oh, Councilmember Stewart?
My apologies. I forgot to thank the technical committee for their work on the materials that were presented. We've asked a lot of questions about things above the ground today and about how residents throughout the neighborhood will use the sidewalk and the features. We also reviewed lots and lots of pages of all of the good assurances that the neighborhood is prepared, the infrastructure is prepared, to welcome about 1,100 new units worth of residents to the neighborhood. So I just wanted to thank the technical committee for their work on that and yours, Mr. McCarr.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I'll pass that along.
Thank you. So it sounds like the council is okay without a study session, which means that we would want to set a public hearing for June 18th, is my understanding?
That's correct.
In which case, I would ask, is there a motion to set a public hearing for this item on June 18th?
So moved?
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote, starting with Council Vice President Forsyth.
Aye.
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 Aye. And with that, the public hearing is set for June 18th. Thank you very much.
If questions come up prior to the hearing, please, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Our next item of business is a staff report for the Tourism Strategic Plan. Seraphie Allen, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item. Director Allen, Deputy Director Allen.
Thank you, and good evening, City Council. I am Deputy Director Seraphie Allen, the Planning and Community Development Deputy Director. Tonight, Jackie Laylor is here to present on the Tourism Strategic Plan. This staff report was prepared based on your comments and questions at the May 7th Committee of the whole meeting. As a reminder, this is the first Tourism Strategic Plan for Redmond, and it will help inform our It will help inform our implementation, and we're very excited about this being our first plan, and it is long overdue. So this process included extensive stakeholder feedback from various city departments, hoteliers, small businesses, meeting planners, event planners, and more. Staff will present today and try to answer all of the questions that were brought forward from the committee meeting. And if there are additional questions or clarity is needed after today, staff have reserved a study session if needed, but we are hoping that this could go on consent. But if needed, we have time allocated just in case. So with that, I will turn it over to Jackie.
Thank you, Seraphie. And hello again, council. We're here today, we're looking for your support, your general feedback, and any questions you have related to the draft strategic plan. This plan will be used to guide tourism direction for the next five years. We'll work across departments, various organizations, and tourism partners to accomplish these initiatives. These initiatives will also inform budget proposals for council's approval. Redmond will continue to evolve over the coming years, and this plan is meant to be flexible for future iterations as our needs change. It is also meant to be a starting point and essentially an agreement from the various There's multiple reasons and purpose for the strategic plan and why now. We are looking to create a unified tourism understanding approach for Redmond. As stated, this is the first strategic plan for our city. So before this, we didn't really have an agreement on where we wanted to go, where we were, and what the future held for us. So that was really important for us to come to the drawing board together and decide what that looks like. We also wanted to align with all the other internal programs, goals, and plans. One recent example of this that you've seen is the Economic Development Plan and other plans that we've looked at, making sure we bridge together and don't work against one another. We also have two funding sources now. And if you are not familiar, last July, the TPA started collecting a per-night fee. I know earlier it was called a tax, but I want to correct that it is not a tax, it's a room night fee. And that's a $2.50 fee on every room night. And that's a, that is a fund that is ran through an interlocal agreement with Bellevue. We also have the Lodging Tax Fund, which is what I'm always here in front of you for. So those are the two funding sources, and the TPA is a new fund for us in Redmond. We don't manage that fund, but it is a funding source that we don't want to work against. We want to come together, we want to meet with those individuals and those stakeholders, and make sure that we're in agreement on where we want to be going. We also want to optimize on the arrival of light rail. Light rail is a huge opportunity for us to move people and to bring people here from other areas of our region and hopefully have them stay or at least spend their money here in Redmond. We want to inform the upcoming budget proposals through the priorities that have raised up through this plan and through the stakeholders. And we also want to inform the future tourism marketing scope of work, because that is where we want to be in the future. So as we go into this RFP process, this plan will bring forward what we need to be doing in that scope of work. That's currently contracted with Bullseye Creative to run the Experian's Redmond Tourism brand. We will not be working in a silo on this plan. We are closely collaborating with other departments and divisions at the city, including the Parks and Recreation Events and Permits Departments, or Divisions, Transportation, Communications, and more. There are quite a few requirements for the Lodging Tax Fund. I just wanted to remind the council of some of those. It's been a while since I've been in front of you with this, so this is just a refresher for most of you. It may be new for some of you, and that's okay. There's quite a few requirements. Because this fund is a tax, it's a 1% tax on hotels and lodging stays. It goes into a fund that we are allowed to use for tourism marketing, special events that are designed to attract tourists. There's this other piece for tourism-related facilities. We don't typically work in that. So usually, we are using these funds for the first two purposes, which is tourism marketing and special events to bring tourists here. We have to report to the state. I send a report in every May, it's due by May, on all these different metrics. And so from every single funded event and program, I have to bring forward these metrics for the state. Of course, we're only as good as our data. This was brought up at our last meeting. So some of this is guesswork, some of it is not. It depends on the event, if there's registration, you know, some of these events, they know how many people they're bringing, such as the sporting events. Festivals are a lot harder right now to grab that data from. So the state's okay with some of that gray area. We would obviously like to get better data, which we'll go into a little bit more here There was extensive stakeholder engagement throughout this process, which you've heard about. We're very excited about the level of interest in this plan, and we want to thank all those that were involved to help shape the initiatives that you see outlined. You've also seen a few letters of support, and I know a few more have trickled in. We've been very thankful for everybody who's really been behind us and been behind this plan and worked with us to get here. It has been a lot of work. There's been one-on-one interviews, there's been focus groups, there was a visioning workshop, briefings, and we also did a questionnaire that had over a 50% response rate, which is quite high. So the level of interest is really great for this topic. Through that visioning workshop, we did come to a first version of the vision, and then it has gone through many, many, many iterations. Thank you, Councilmember Fields, for all your great, and all the great information you've gave us in the LTAC and the hoteliers. There's been a lot of really great work done on this, so I'll just read it to you briefly. A vibrant community where every person is welcomed. Our diversity, active lifestyle, access to nature, and culture of innovation offers experiences that inspire exploration, foster enthusiasm, and leave a lasting impact on all who visit. What else came from this is four goals, and each initiative is within one of these goals. I'll go through each of these goals quickly. I know some people listening in haven't had a chance to read through all the initiatives, so I'll just give a very high-level overview. For goal one, it's enhancing the visitor experience. What this means is making sure that visitors have a seamless, enjoyable, and memorable time when they come to Redmond. Enhancing the visitor experience will help Redmond bring more first-time visitors, keep guests longer, and create repeat visits. Example initiatives include promoting and utilizing the light rail for compression traffic. One exciting example of where we're trying to do this is in 2026 with the FIFA World Cup. That's a really big opportunity for our area, and we want to bring as many people as we can to Redmond. There's other events like that, though. It's not just the FIFA World Cup, but there will be many events that we can really capitalize on the movement of people. Other initiatives include working with our neighboring partners like Woodinville Wine Country, encouraging development of retail space that will attract culinary, beverage, and nightlife businesses, which you've also seen in other plans, and positioning and promoting Redmond as an intercultural destination, showcasing our various cultures through the arts, events, and dining options. Goal number two, building collaborative partnerships. Redmond has many tourism partners, and this strategic plan helped us cultivate some of those relationships. Example initiatives outlined in this area are strengthening relationships with our partners at Marymore Park, the Redmond Town Center, and our small business community, and working together with partners to promote Redmond's great recreational fields, trails, and water for tournaments and events. Goal number three, developing support for the tourism industry. We should acknowledge here that the tourism industry encompasses more than hotels and events. Hospitality, small businesses, including restaurants, retail shops, and entertainment venues, help make up the tourism industry, as do our beautiful parks, trails, recreation, and more. Some example initiatives within this goal are prioritizing funding events that include an overnight component, exploring and allocating resources towards advanced data tools, and conducting a benchmark economic study, economic impact study, excuse me. By investing in improved data collection, as outlined in this plan, we can make more informed budget decisions and monitor and invest in the activities that maximize our return on investment. This effort will also result in growing the Lodging Tax Fund. The last goal outlined in the strategic plan is building destination awareness. While we may all know how great Redmond is, it's important that we communicate and promote our city to those who may not be familiar with all we have to offer. Example initiatives here include leveraging Redmond's innovation in space, gaming, and technology. This is an area that rose pretty high with the stakeholders. They really felt that we should lean into this unique part of Redmond. We do have quite a bit of space in gaming and technology companies, and so this is something they felt we should leverage. Partnering with media influencers that reach a diverse travel population. Leveraging Redmond's historic downtown core and assets, again, very unique to Redmond, also very beautiful, the historic sites that we have and you can learn about. And continuing to expand investments in storytelling, photo, and video assets. What you just heard was a concise summary of the four goals and some of the initiatives associated with each of these goals. We also heard from the council when we presented on May 7th regarding some of your interest areas and questions. I wanted to quickly outline each of those here. There was support for improved data and research. Through conservative analysis, it is estimated that Redmond's visitor economy is worth approximately $634 million annually in economic impact. Again, that was pretty conservative, and we would really like to know what that, a more true number is like, and how do we increase it? In addition, and related to data research, there was a council request from the May 7th meeting to see a map of short-term rentals and hotels in relation to the light rail station. I have added this resource to the council packet as attachment F. Tourism program management came up, which is also the administrative support. In 2023, the budget allocated $12,000 in lodging tax funding for administrative support. The support for this program costs about $90,000 annually, so we have been paying for support through ARPA funds and not through the lodging tax at this time. There was also quite a lot of interest on how these initiatives would impact the budget and the budgeting process. The initiatives outlined in this plan will help inform the '25-'26 budget proposals. If this plan is approved today, there are no funding implications. That will all come through the regular process. Staff have been working across various departments and will work with the LTAC to bring forward budget recommendations that you will see and you will approve through the regular process. Based on what came through the stakeholder engagement and initiatives, I would anticipate the upcoming budget proposals having an increased coverage of administrative costs and investments to spend down the N Fund Reserve, which is currently around $1.1 million. Another area of interest from the council was the DMO structure, so that Destination Marketing Organization, what would that look like? This structure could look various ways and be customized to meet the unique needs of Redmond and our partners. What I What I attached for you as attachment G is just one example of many ways that this can look. Additional areas of support mentioned at the meeting included future cycling events, planning for transportation for residents as well as visitors, extending stays into the weekend, and support for a visitor center. Again, these are all areas outlined within the plan, and staff will keep the council informed on the progress through routine updates and the budgeting process. That concludes my presentation. Thank you, council, for your time and your attention. Staff and various stakeholders are excited about the opportunities within this strategic plan, and I hope you are too. Once again, I am seeking council's guidance on whether staff can proceed to include this item on the June 4 consent agenda, or if further clarification is needed in a June 11 study session. At this time, are there comments or questions?
Thank you so much for that presentation. Are there questions or comments from the council? Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you so much for reviewing this with us tonight. Also, very much wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to meet with you all and go over this a bit. Couple weeks ago, a few of us had the opportunity to get a preview and ask some questions, so I found that really helpful and valuable, especially in preparation for tonight. So I don't really have a lot of questions based on that prior conversation, but I did want to note the incredible amount of letters of support that we're getting from business, and in particular, small businesses. We just received one just a little bit before this meeting, and it really speaks like well to all the work that you all have done when we get small businesses actually taking the time to email in their support for something like this. So just wanted to say thank you for listening to the small businesses, making sure that they were a part of this, and seeing their support really gives me a lot of confidence in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Not a question, just appreciation for all of the work that you put into this, the stakeholder engagement specifically, looking at all of those one-on-one interviews and especially the questionnaire, which over 50% response rate is incredible. And then I also want to put on the record how excited I am for the opportunities with the World Cup. So thank you for forecasting to that as well.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Noiva Camina.
So many times that I could probably say that, but say this, but what an absolutely exciting time to be living in Redmond, not only because of just the growth and the change that we're having, but the staff and the minds that we've got working together to steward this change. So I just want to thank the staff and those that have been involved, all the community feedback that we've gotten on this, and the, just want to speak directly to the courage that it takes when we are doing something for the first time, knowing that, you know, there's going to be things where we look back and we say, yeah, maybe we could have done this differently, and knowing that going into it and still having the courage to be creative and finding like what is possible and what is in our best interest, what is it that is going to be championing for Redmond. So thank you for all the work that's already been done on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I really appreciate the chance to come back and hear about this from you again tonight, and then for the attachments that were included this time around. So I do want to thank you for the time it took to put the map together. The reason that I asked for this, or requested this in the last touch base was to, so that we could visualize a bit more about that transportation network that might be needed on those weekend stays. And I think what this map really illuminates is that our hotels are on the light rail for the most part, and so when we're talking about things that may be transportation needs for tourism, they might be things that are like out to Woodinville or something like that. But just to know that we're on a good track there. And I also want to thank you for the org chart, and I just want to bring this back to my colleagues' attention because I think the plan is very well-baked. We're very excited to get going on some of this work and to have it all in one place. This strategy that we're getting a lot of community support for, I really appreciate. And it will be incumbent upon us then to fund our dreams, and I think that this org chart kind of illuminates some of that and some of the choices that we'll have ahead. So thank you so much for your work on this. I don't feel like I need another study session on it personally, but would just be ready to get going on it and see where we can go in the next little while. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll jump in and ask a question myself. Thank you so much for the work on this. I'll just echo my colleagues. This is really exciting, and it's great to think about the future of Redmond and how we can attract even more people to come here and create a more vibrant community. Appreciate it also, the information around budget and around the Destination Management Organization, and in particular, the section that does talk about kind of bringing together the different organizations. I'm curious if you can just share for us in person a little bit more about the vision for that governance, understanding that right now, for example, the TPA funds, in terms of budgeting, the TPA funds are budgeted and pretty, and allocated by that TPA board, whereas the LTAC funds, well-recommended by the LTAC, are approved by the council. And I know we're talking about bringing that into the budget process. Can you just speak to the vision for what that would look like with this centralized organization and the relationship to city council in our budget process?
When you, can I clarify? When you say centralized, are you, what do you mean by centralized?
Maybe my understanding was different, but in terms of the point within here on page 61, I think around diverting all the funds to one organization.
Oh, a DMO structure? Is that what you're referring to? How that would look?
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood.
Okay, so a Destination Marketing Organization is one way that cities set up to have this entity, like Visit Bellevue, that would basically do the marketing and management of tourism for all these different sources within the city. So you would funnel money in through lodging tax, usually. It can be any which way. You would funnel money in through the TPA, and then this one organization would do a lot of the work. So Visit Bellevue is basically a DMO. We don't have that set up right now, so what we do and what we are doing is I'm working with the TPA manager. I meet with her about three times a month now. We're actually conversing on our budgets and what they're going to look like, and I'm asking her, what is the TPA willing to put money towards? Because if we want to fund all these things, we're going to have to come together on it. So we're going into a Woodinville Wine Country partnership together. We are going into the Remling, Remling, how do I say it? The Farms, Remlinger Farms, Concert Series together. So we're picking different sponsorships. And what we're doing right now is we're, because we don't have this other organization, it hasn't been stood up, we could go through that process. It may take a few years or multiple years, which is okay. We can decide if that's what we want to do. But right now, we just got our feet under us with the TPA, and so what we're doing is we're bridging that budget together and talk, we're having regular meetings right now to have a budget that we've put together by meeting with the TPA.
Great.
I think I answered your question.
So to clarify, in this future state, the LTAC and the TPA would each decide to budget a certain amount that would go to this centralized organization? Or would all funds from each entity just go into this organization, was actually my question.
Typically, it works, no. It would work the first way around. We would decide how much LTAC lodging tax funding would we want as a city to put to this organization. The TPA would decide how much money do they want to put towards it. So it would be up to us. We would, if you're going to stand that organization up, you would want to fund it appropriately, so we would decide what does that look like. And then typically, the DMOS will either do their own marketing, but a lot of them will hire out two entities like Bullseye, and Bullseye could possibly do marketing through the DMO, or they would buy their own advertising and do a smaller portion of marketing. Again, there's so many ways that they will cut that pie. They could have in-house marketing with ad buys. So it's hard to say without it being in existence, but they would not take all the funds. We would decide what we want to give them.
Great. Thank you so much for clearing that up. I was just trying to understand it, and hopefully it was, maybe my colleagues all understood that. So Councilmember Stewart, go ahead.
Do you mind if I add one comment, too, before that?
Yeah, go ahead.
To say, too, that this plan is helping to set the vision for how we would think about how we would want to structure that. So going back to, you know, this year, we're not proposing likely a budget related for a DMO, but at some point, we might, and your approval of the plan helps staff understand what might be something based on what we've talked about and prioritize from the adoption of the plan.
Great, thank you. And just to reiterate, I was wondering how it would work, but I love the idea of bringing this together and of having our own, you know, Visit Redmond or whatever we would want to call it type of Destination Management Organization. So I think it's one of the key parts within this plan that stands out to me. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I would agree with the council president, and since reading the draft plan for the first time, the number of places I've been where I've thought about like, oh, the DMO could be advertising this, you know, like out in Evans Creek in the middle of the night, waiting for the Northern Lights with a bunch of other residents, that was really cool. Anyway, so the DMO would have its own board of directors, and since we're discussing that at the moment, I wanted to ask, would that be similar to the LTAC in the sense that this body would have a representative potentially? Is that how Bellevue does it?
I don't know how Bellevue does it. I did speak with Izakwa, they did recently stand up a DMO, and she had stood it up where there's hoteliers on there and there's other stakeholders, and then someone from the city also is involved. So again, you can set it up however you would like, and that would be a part of the visioning process of bringing a DMO onboard.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I did have one more comment or question, since it sounds like nobody other than me maybe was interested in a study session, so, but I'm very happy to just ask my question now. So I think the, and again, just want to reiterate how much I think this is a great plan and happy to support it. The one thing that I'm wondering, just given the context of some of our past discussions, is the piece around city signature events. And I noted the letter that we had gotten also from our Parks Director on this, and just looking forward to the budgeting. From my perspective, even looking at this plan and thinking about placemaking and what makes Redmond a really special place to come to, events like Redmond Derby Days, for me, are things that make Redmond Redmond, things that have been around being, you know, making it one of the longest-running bike races in the country, you know, having these really kind of incredible, you know, history that we're maintaining, even though it may not be the exact same bike race, but we are, we still do have bikes at Redmond Derby Days. So, and I guess I'm curious, as we think about this plan, how do we think about the things that the city puts on and the placemaking we create that makes Redmond special, that attracts people on a regular basis, just by the vibrancy we create in our city, and how we think of that, and how it kind of fits into the tourism plan?
Yeah, that's a great point, and it's not lost on me, you know, our past conversations. And I think what has come through loud and clear is that Derby Days is beloved, and we have to find a way to help fund it. What also came through loud and clear is that there are tourism dollars here that we want to use for things that put people in the hotels, right? There was a lot of support of the cultural arts programming and building that up, which is a part of the signature events. There was a lot of support here for the winter programming, which is Redmond Lights, and that is also a signature event. So as we've talked through internally, Derby Days was the one that was left in the air, where it didn't necessarily have that bike race anymore, and it didn't have the things that were traditionally bringing people here. And so staff, park staff, are going to work on that one and bring an enhancement proposal forward. So this is something that we've agreed is going to be best coming through in an enhancement proposal in the '25 and '26 budgeting process.
So, and I'm just, just want to be clear, though, in approving this plan, we're not approving that change in decision.
Correct.
Because I think I'm not 100% on board with that at the moment.
Yeah.
And I think there's more discussion to be had about what's the best funding source for something like Redmond Derby Days and what value it might bring, especially given the historical precedent of LTAC funding this. So I don't need to get into it in this, but I just wanted to find out, is this the place where we need to discuss it before we approve this, or can we have those discussions ongoing as we kind of look at the whole picture around what we'll make for a vibrant tourism economy here?
So I think the, and to pair kind of your last question, too, it's, this plan is helping to set our vision for how we are doing tourism in our city. And one of our funding sources for that is the LTAC. And so there is direction in there to prioritize that funding towards increasing tourism. So on the one hand, I do want to say, like, values-wise, you are signaling through the adoption of, we want to promote tourism and increase the pot overall, and so we're going to focus on tourism. That said, that's not a budget decision. You will make your budget decision and can have that conversation, which is why we wouldn't want you to make it now, because you're not able to look at the budget as a whole picture. And so that's why when staff bring forward their recommendations, you'll be able to think, you know, is this, taking in these recommendations, knowing that that came from the strategic plan, is that something we still want to move forward with, or should we use this other pot and that means something else? And that's the difficult part, of course, being on a city council, is managing all of the different desires that we have in a city. But, so to be clear, no, but you are saying, signaling your values around the strategic plan around tourism, but you will get to make the actual determination of the budget when it comes forward as part of the overall budget picture.
Great, thank you. And from my reading of this, I actually see events like Derby Days really fitting right into this plan as being a key piece of what makes Redmond special. So excited to support this. And it sounds like there are no, did you have a comment, Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, I just want to contrast a bit of history here. A couple of years ago, when we talked about LTAC, it, from a council perspective, there were some of us that we weren't real certain of what LTAC was doing and what it was about. And we actually had people writing in to us from residents saying, you know, where's the transparency in this committee? We have grown leaps and bounds, and I would attribute all of that to staff listening to what happened two years ago, or whenever it was, and understanding the direction that needs to happen. I would also say that Jackie, Seraphie, who am I leaving out?
Philly.
Philly, of course. Sorry, Philly, if you're here. Have really put an amazing amount of thought and creativity and collaboration, working with Parks, working with the city, working with the committee, working with the community, because they took this as something where Redmond is at the crossroads. This is sort of a metaphor for Redmond growing up, in my view. This is our opportunity to become, not that what we heard in the public testimony earlier, another Bellevue, another Seattle, a big mess. This is, this is a metaphor for us making decisions about really having a really cool city and a great community that everybody understands is a place that they could visit, they could enjoy, they could achieve their goals from a visitor perspective. So the work we've done and the changes that have been made should never be underestimated about the amount of work that staff has put into this, and it's going to continue to demand a lot of staff work. So I'm really excited to work with y'all, and I look forward to this strategic plan actually being an active plan for the city. And the only thing, the other thing I would like to add is, when I, in the committee meetings I was in, nobody said that darn Derby Days has taken our money. They were very, very sensitive and very proud of Derby Days, but they also want to get this right. So I think the city has some decisions to make. We have some decisions to make in the budget. How are we going to fund everything and how are we going to fund it appropriately? This is not a this or them, or a one side or the other side. This is a decision overall.
Thank you, Councilmember Fields, and thank you for your service on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. Appreciate the time that you put in there. Yeah, and I would just add my two comments, two cents, that I do really appreciate the time that's been put in, and I think this, this small issue that I'm raising is something for us to work out as a piece, kind of as a team within Redmond, to figure out, how do we make sure that we support all the things that we're in our community loves and build on what we're doing? So I think, I think very well put in that way of, you know, let's figure that out. I just wanted to be clear that this decision isn't indicating that we're for sure changing a particular funding source on one particular thing. So I think that's clear to me, and I'm happy to move this along. I'm curious, it seems like everyone is good to put this onto the consent agenda. Can you remind us what me- Can you remind us what meeting you would propose to put that on the consent agenda for?
June 4th.
June 4th. I'm not seeing any objections, seeing a few thumbs here, so let's put that on the June 4th consent agenda. Thank you so much for your work on that, and thanks to everyone who wrote in letters of support for this, this plan. We'll look forward to voting on that on June 4th.
Thank you.
The next item of business is ombuds reports. For April, we had Councilmember Salah Houdin. Councilmember Salah Houdin, do you have anything left over from April?
Just a few emails regarding the council rules for items from the audience, as well as permanent supportive housing, and then one thread on students potentially parking, potentially students parking in front of mailboxes in, in a neighborhood in Redmond.
Thank you. And for May, our, our ombuds is Councilmember Nueva Camina. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Hello, everyone. For the month of May, we had one of the, our viewers mentioned the, reach out and mention the importance of speaking directly into the microphone and projecting, making sure that everything is directional. We've had several emails continuing that are both in support of the permanent supportive housing with Plymouth, as well as those that are against it, and continuing to get more around questions on timeline and that. So those have all been directed to our website and to our FAQ, as well as some expanded information. We also had someone reach out concerning drones, and what our emergency response is going to be moving with that. I'm working with staff on getting some more information. Community member reached out to commend us for the interaction on council, the diversity of input, different perspectives, support of the continued no-fee EMS transport for Redmond residents, and the spirit of community that we're modeling as a city. Had somebody reach out around noise complaint and concern about the modified exhausts that with the exotics that come in on Saturday, that they stay late with more restaurants and bars and around Redmond Town Center, and just calling our, our attention to that. So working on a response for that as well with staff. Several emails showing support for the strategic tourism plan, which we just got done hearing about, and many calling it very inclusive and forward-thinking. I had a resident reach out about the enhance, to enhance the safety and accessibility for bicyclists and pedestrians alike, just as we're moving forward with all of our planning. Redmond Elementary Sustainability had invited council to bike and walk from Anderson to Redmond Elementary, and unfortunately, we had gotten that in after a meeting and not in time before another, but we're looking forward to, to being invited to other community involvement, things like that. Speaking of, we are invited to, and also make sure that folks know about, May 25th, the Emotional Abuse Discussion is hosting their third annual United Festival, which honors Asian-American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And one more email regarding the likely students parking from Redmond High School, parking in front of mailboxes. And that concludes our ombuds report.
Thank you. Are there other ombuds? I see Vice, Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. Just had a couple of conversations around housing, housing development and environmental sustainability around creating more housing, and a couple of really excited conversations about new use for family members around the Senior and Community Center. Folks that didn't think that their elderly parents would get, get interested in it and are actively participating in the lunch program, so that's exciting to have some new membership there.
Thank you. Other items? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I had eight visitors to my office hours, and I owe a few people some follow-up still. We talked about a variety of issues, including representatives from the Bluebird Project, which is a youth-led 501(c)(3) here in Redmond, interested in producing a community mural to honor seniors in our community, and I'll be connecting them to Director Hamilton. We had a visit from a resident concerned about a business in Rose Hill, a resident stopped by with feedback on climbing, climate planning in Redmond 2050, and a resident working to better understand how seniors in our community are learning about what's going on in the city, not just in government, but in community more generally. I was also able to participate in a workshop through the Housing Development Consortium's Affordable Housing Week on LGBT, on, in creating more inclusion for LGBTQ seniors in our community, and especially in affordable housing that might be in cities like ours. And on that note, I just wanted to congratulate the City of Redmond and our incredible team for receiving the Community Champion Award by the Housing Development Consortium on the very first day of Affordable Housing Week last week. So I believe there was a little news release about that, but congratulations, team, Team Redmond, way to go.
Thank you, and very exciting to celebrate that. Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Thank you. I'm sorry to go again, but Councilmember Nueva Camina brought up the Redmond Elementary School Walk and Roll Event, and I actually attended that. Really exciting opportunity to, you know, see our elementary schoolers walking from Anderson Park to Redmond Elementary and seeing, you know, how to abide by the traffic laws and waiting for the sidewalk. And they had, there was a police escort, so we were safe, but really, really fun there. Speaking of safety there, I also attended the Spring Safety Fair at Fire Station 11 this past weekend, and very exciting, you know, opportunities for community members to see how our police department and fire department and our first responders in general are, you know, doing incredible work across our city, and they showcased some of that at the fire station.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And I'll just note that I also have engaged with a couple of different residents, one who was concerned about an effort that was going on on the Kirkland-Redmond border, and I got in touch with our staff that are engaging with Kirkland city staff on that issue, and was able to put the, the resident in touch with them so that he could follow up with, for more information on, on how we're dealing with that. Also had a, a meeting with a senior in the Redmond Senior and Community Center and got to hear just about how seniors are experiencing it, ended up talking with a bunch of different seniors that were there enjoying it, and it's just, just wanted to reflect that it's, it's really exciting having that space and seeing it activated, already been hearing about the programming, and, and even some fun performances that have been going on on that stage. So really exciting to just be able to, to see that, that space already being really vibrant. Any other items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is committee reports. Are there any committee reports this evening? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. I attended my first session of the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Committee for the 2025 legislative session. So my participation in representing the City of Redmond is under the current direction of our 2024 legislative agenda, and I'm working really closely with Amy Tsai and our lobbyist. We've, they, we've been having some great conversations in how Redmond might want to show up in this space, and I really appreciate their support. Just for my colleagues' awareness, AWC is currently revising its statement of policy, which was last revised in 2020. That is being done, that work is being done by another committee, but a, a large piece of that work is revisiting the AWC's prioritization of local control in order to use language that will be more, that will receive a better response in the legislature. So they are currently workshopping some language and a possible change there around more community-driven solutions, and, and this conversation does kind of take up a lot of oxygen in the room, so I just wanted to let everyone know that that's going on. I think my colleagues will be excited to hear that some of the issues that rose up for the committee in terms of what we're looking forward to seeing prioritized this year include affordable housing subsidies, investments in a comprehensive behavioral health system, increasing the property sales tax cap, or excuse me, the, increasing the property tax cap, and rent stabilization came up quite a bit throughout the course of the conversation. So public safety as well, transit-oriented development as well, but many of the issues that are important to us are showing up in that first round of committee input. Our next meeting is in person at the Association of Washington Cities Conference next month, and we'll be working through the summer to set the AWC's agenda, and hopefully having many of Redmond's priorities represented there as well. Thanks.
I'll just take the privilege to say thank you for your service on that committee, Councilmember Stewart. I think it's great for us, given how passionate we feel about our legislative agenda, to be able to influence the whole AWC agenda, and especially to bring that conversation. I know we've had on our council quite a bit about kind of how we think about the home rule provision versus also needing to set standards at a state level for all of our cities, and to nuance that a little bit. So we'll look forward to hearing the outcomes of that conversation. Are there other committee reports? Councilmember Salah Houdin?
Thank you. We just wrapped up our Public Safety and Human Services Committee earlier today. We had a few items on the agenda, two of which went to consent and approval of data use agreement between the City of Redmond and Washington Data Exchange for Public Safety Project Data Automation Group, as well as an extension and amendment of consulting service agreements for the Fire Department's Internal Mental Health and Wellness Professional. One item, we moved to new business on June 4th, an ordinance amending Redmond Municipal Codes regarding fireworks. And then we had two reports, a fire save and loss report from Q1 of this year, and the community health through Thrive report.
Thank you. Other committee reports? Not seeing any, then I will give a few of my committee reports. I attended the King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting. We had an additional meeting, usually we only meet every other month, but we added one this month specifically because we're, the King Conservation District is, is looking to renew its rate, to increase its rates and charges and renew their, their ILA with King County, and wanting to gather input from the committee. By next month, they're going to ask us to vote on a letter of support for their proposal. We, I actually attended also the Public Issues Committee, where also Councilmember Stewart is our representative, but I joined as King Conservation District Advisory Committee Chair, to give some context alongside the Executive Director of KCD, just in terms of, of the committee's pieces, and also to gather feedback from SCA into the decision that, that we'll be making on that, just in terms of supporting or adding any feedback. We did have a very robust discussion at the KCD Advisory Committee of some items we'd like to see, and we'll be seeing some updated pieces next month before we, they, they move forward towards the King County Council, who will ultimately be the deciders on that. But overall, I think some good things, a few changes, but some really exciting work that really integrates in the future, a lot of the strategic planning that they've been doing, integrating equity and inclusion into a lot of the work that they do throughout all their programming. So that's very cool. We also, I also attended the One Redmond Board Meeting, and just wanted to note that Steve Yun was elected as the upcoming president of the One Redmond Board, I think actually effective as of now. So, and past president was Michael Matt Miller from Microsoft, so thanks to Michael for, for serving in that role and engaging with our city in that time, and wanted to flag that for councilmembers, that, you know, Steve Yun will be a person you'll be hearing from more often, as well in his One Redmond role. And then finally, I also attended the Riot 8 Salmon Recovery Council Meeting, and we approved about $7 million in grant recs, rec recommendations, both the Salmon Recovery Funding Board and also the, the Cooperative Watershed Management Grants, which are run by the, the King Flood Control District, and just a lot of really cool projects, both big restoration and acquisition projects that'll be important for salmon recovery and the health of our ecosystems, as well as a lot of really exciting outreach and education projects that we'll be seeing our residents taking part in to, to learn about watershed health in, in our area, as well as in the whole Riot 8 region. So those are a couple of pieces. I also realized in ombuds that I, I didn't flag two meetings that I, I was able to have. One is that I was able to meet with, with Councilmember Salah Houdin, with a resident who had reached out to the whole council, asking to be able to meet, connected with Kanishka Restaurant, and was able to hear just a little bit about some of the concerns that they raised around parking and around some of, some safety issues in that area, and will be following up on, on those issues. Also was able to attend a dinner put on by the Bellevue Chamber with a, with a guest speaker from the Brookings Institute, just speaking on housing and housing policies, and took away some really interesting pieces from that, being able to discuss with other city leaders and stakeholders in our area about housing, and happy to pass on some of the information they shared at that. And then lastly, also was able to meet along with Councilmember Stewart and the mayor with some representatives from Microsoft and some consultants that they had, that they had pulled together, looking at some of our housing policies to, to get to gather some of, of that information and to share a little bit about some questions they, they had on our Redmond 2050 process. So those are a couple of additional pieces. Apologies, I didn't do that in the earlier one. Are there any additional committee reports? All right, seeing none. There is no unfinished business, no new business, and that concludes our business items for the meeting. If there is no objection to adjourning, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.